Good evening. Thank you everybody for attending the proposed town and county budgets for 2014-2015 fiscal year. My name is Brad Sullivan. I chair the Board of Finance. The vice chair is Omennale. Our regular board members are Leah Saunders, Valerie and I, Dennis Donovan, and Tom Longo. The board's alternate members are Laurie Santos and Bruce Farmer. Our board holds regular public meetings every month on the 3rd Monday at 7:00 PM in the Rose Room. The budget planning process began last October with a community conversation where residents were asked to share their thoughts about where Clinton Public Schools needs to focus its spending. The next step was presentations by each cost center. Cost center administrators outlined where they have successfully managed to contain or rid of costs and explained why additional funding or staffing in specific areas may be needed to ensure success. The proposed education spending plan is vetted exhaustively by the Board of Education, which as you all know is comprised of elected town residents volunteering their time to oversee our school district and its administrators. Ultimately, our bipartisan board of education unanimously approved a fiscally responsible budget that meets our students' needs. It was presented to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance at a joint meeting of the boards at the end of February and includes some increases that are required by contract and some decreases in areas where savings have been realized. As far as the towns' proposed operating budget, several workshops were held as usual in the month of February. We examined every department's budget and received input from the selectmen, first selectmen, and the department heads who were appropriate. All of these hearings were duly noticed and open to the public. After we did our budget review, some difficult choices were made and the budget numbers were finalized. The Board of Finance approved the following. The town budget, as proposed, is $16,65,128. The Board of Education budget is $32,431,98 for a total proposed budget of $48,496,226. The proposed increase in overall spending is a little more than 4% from last year, and the mill rate, if these budgets are approved, would increase by less than 1 mill, or 8.89 mills to be exact. There is a market increase in the capital improvement budgets to ensure that infrastructure is maintained and for payment of debt service. While assembling these spending plans, the board considered estimated surpluses in multiple ways. While there are still two and a half more months left in the current fiscal year, we have attempted to project where budget line items may come in over or under budget, as well as the revenue trends to date. In the budget presented to you tonight, there is a revenue line item called appropriated surplus. This totals $150,000. This line item represents one use of our surplus to reduce the tax burden. Another use for the town's surpluses, or reserves, was used to lower the capital budget request in total. Finally, in various line items that we expect to realize surpluses, there have been requested budget reductions. All of these measures serve to effectively return some portion of the surplus to the taxpayer by lowering the burden for fiscal 2015, but also with a mind towards maintaining a steady credit rating and replenishing our reserves or renegade fund. We are winding down to the budget referendum. The annual budget meeting pursuant to our town charter is May 7th, 2014, which is the first Wednesday in May. The annual budget meeting for the charter adjourns to referendum by machine ballot. The referendum this year will be on May 14th from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM in this building. With respect to this evening's public hearing, if you would like to make a comment about the proposed budget, please come forward and put your name and address on the signing sheet. Please direct your comments to the proposed budgets only. Please take note that there is a reasonable time limit for any person's remarks. We're not going to have the clock going, but just give everyone a chance to speak. In the interest of expediency, I deserve the right to impose a time limit, which most of you know I don't usually do. Your comments are a very important part of this process, and we're all here to listen to your comments about these proposed budgets. Finally, while we appreciate your attendance here tonight, please be cognizant of the fact that this board's responsibility is to propose reasonable spending plans for the operations of this municipality and its school district. This means taking into consideration the thousands of people who are not here tonight. So, we should start with the Board of Education budget. If anybody wants to be heard, please come on down. Quarterback! It'll be a quick meeting. We can sit with each other. Come on, you go first. Thank you, sir.
I would speak on one issue in the education budget that has to do with the hiring of three new people called coaches. In my experience, having experienced in business, coaches tell me one or two, three things. Either we have incompetent teachers and they need coaches to improve their capabilities, or we have an organization, an education organization, trying to create a larger organization just for purposes of having an organization, or more likely, there are some problems with this common core process that we are going through, that is going to cause us to have to have extra people and extra costs to implement. So, I am concerned that these new positions indicate the fact that in the future, things are going to get much worse.
My name is Phil Williams. I'm the Board of Ed, and I'd like to address those comments. The purpose of having coaches is to help instruct teachers in the latest technologies and methods of teaching the kids. We have a large amount of teachers that have been out of home, professional education courses in universities for a number of years, and like anybody, you need to stay current with the methodologies of making the best using your time and producing the best team, whether it's students in the classroom or students on the basketball court. So, hiring coaches to help these teachers do the very best job they can possibly do has been proven to be very effective. We've had them in the past, and we did a program where we tried, and it worked out exceptionally well. We saw a marked improvement in the way that the teachers work collaboratively with other teachers across the curriculums, from science to English to math and language. So, having the teachers understand how they can work together is what these coaches' function is and as to why we're bringing them in, because our job as the Board of Ed is to increase the quality of the students that we are graduating every year from our schools, and we're doing that. We can't continue to do it if we don't continue to teach the teachers. So, that's the reason why we've got three coaches in the budget. So, I hope you can understand and agree with us that these are monies that we need to spend. We have no intentions of increasing staff to make a larger headcount. Trust us, HR is not what we want to deal with. Having more people is not the best thing to do. Having better people is what we want. So, we're bringing in the resources that we need to have a better staff, so that's the purpose for the coaches.
Well, if we hired three people, that's more people.
And we can stay with a headcount of exactly what we have, and you can watch the performance of the students decline over years. You can watch the performance of the teachers decline, and if you'd like to take on the issues of common core, then I suggest you talk to your elected state representatives and your congressmen and senators. If you don't like common core, talk to them. We can't do anything about that as a board. We are under the laws of the state and Connecticut, and we have to follow those laws. Some of the common core issues do increase costs. They do increase staffing requirements for managing these issues. We don't have anything that we can do about that. So, common core is something that you need to take up with your elected officials at the state and national levels. Write to them, voice your concerns to them, if you like it, if you don't like it, but we have to follow the laws of the state.
Yeah, other states have declined, but you're right. I'll talk to other people about that. It's unfortunate that it's not possible.
I just passed it down to the Board of Finance. First of all, I should have passed it down to you?
Yeah.
I think you need it.
Can we meet no more? Tom, we have to go.
Okay. All set. Anyway, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the Board of Finance. I recognize the effort today, and the Board of Education have put in this budget. My comments tonight, I'm not intending to disrespect you or the Board of Education. That said, one of the Board of Finance's first objectives is to propose a budget that voters trust, support, and pass on the first ballot. Since 2010, the board has repeatedly failed with this objective. What lessons can the Board of Finance derive from these failures? First, the defeated education budgets did not result in any deterioration occurring of education for certain students, nor did they result in any educator losing a job or not being hired. It resulted instead of large budget surpluses. Secondly, voters will not tolerate big budget increases that generate big surpluses while enrollments drop and cost their people needlessly soar. The state's minimum budget requirement, ratchet this three, ratches up based upon the previous year's allocated operating budget. That is inflated when the previous budget generates a large surplus. Many parents, number four, many parents will speak emotionally in support of almost any budget proposed by the administration regardless of the underlying facts. And the Board of Finance members, some Board of Finance members exhibited an indelible fidelity to these highly charred sentiments by blindly rubber stamping any budget proposed by the school administration. The problem with learning from experience is the test comes first and the lesson comes later. The problem with not learning from experience is making the same mistake over and over again. Albert Einstein alleged that insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. So, what can you achieve differently this time to get a more preferable result? Lynn Frieden has suggested the times count for a top-down budget instead of a bottom-up budget. In this case, you tell the Board of Education what they're willing to allocate to education, and they have to figure out how they'll live within it. But how can you do that reasonably? The administration has finally recognized that birth rates have cut and dropped precipitously in 2010. This is a chart. The blue line shows last year's enrollment projection. Finally, they've recognized that the enrollment, that the birth rates have dropped 27% in 2010. They've not recovered. The green line is what they, is the current enrollment. So, they've taken, as you'd expect, having adopted this new birth rate, recognizing it, that they would actually have lowered the projected enrollment in subsequent years. The blue line again represents what the enrollment was projected in last year's budget. The green line is what's projected issue. So, instead of lowering future projections, they actually, they actually increased those So, what has happened over the years is that as enrollments have dropped, the costs have continued to go up year after year after year, and as a result of that, this dotted line of the costs, the blue line, is the enrollment, which is going to continue to go down at an even steeper rate. What occurs then is that the cost per pupil keeps going up at a very rapid rate, and I think needlessly. So, what is a reasonable budget? It's a good question, I think. I'll try to give a reasonable answer. The blue line on this chart represents the budgets that have been proposed in previous years. The red line represents what we ultimately passed. The green line represents, these are operating costs and operating budgets. The green line represents the actual cost. The difference between the green line and the red line is the budget, is the budget surplus. The difference between the green line and the blue line is what the budget surplus could have been had been passed on this budget on the first round. The currently projected surplus for the Board of Education's operating budget is estimated to be $480,000, and I think it's more likely to be $300,000 higher because the non-certified pensions contribution of $320,000 has already been fully funded on a yearly basis. But using the lower number of projections, operating expense for the current year of $30,62,651 for the fiscal year, an increase in the actual spending of 2%, which would take this green line up to here, not to here, that would result in $30,664,924. Add $100,000 to that for margin, give you a margin of bulk that you guys are going to need, and now you have a $30,764,924 budget, a 1% increase in the operating budget, but a 2% increase in actual real spending. Using last year's budget as a way of deciding what this year's budget is without looking at what actual spending leads to these budget surpluses that really help no one. I also have a paragraph here about the capital spending, which I'm not going to go into for the audience, but clearly there is an opportunity to decrease that by $61,000 lower than the budget that the Board slightly passed. Any of this increase in education total spending would be $911,856 over the actual spending, a 2% back, or 2% in the budget by $431,000, or 1.4%. With the unaffordable budgetary cost of education debt over the next few years, now would be a very good time to show the taxpayers good faith with a budget that is the right size. Thank you for your attention.
Hello, everybody. I'm Willie Hauser. Thank you very much for here, I have to say today. I am a private, speaking as a private citizen, and although I am on the Board of Education, happily so. A couple of things about what was just said. First of all, I think it's, it's hard to assess the decrease in education, quality of education, based on one or two years' budgets, either passing or not passing. For example, you know, education erodes over time. It doesn't like one day, you know, you have great education, and the next day you have very poor education. What happens is unless education is a priority, and that priority could be personal professional developments, it could be, you know, budget increases, it could be commitment to the children, it could be volunteers, it could be a whole host of things, but if children are not a priority and all the facets that include, are included in high-quality education are not addressed, which include increases, necessary increases, is that you will have over time erosion of the quality of the education. So, while yes, it's hard to say, okay, we cut 1% or 4% last year or the year before and see nothing really changed. It's very, very hard to quantify what changes based on budget over a year or two. But what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that people should be very careful about having such a, you know, such a concrete example of budgets and high-quality education. I'd also like to talk a little bit about this, this repeated conversation about dropping enrollments. So, and the gentleman who was just up here had said that there has, there is a precipitous drop of enrollments, and there continues to be a precipitous, projected precipitous drop in enrollment, and I would really beg to differ. There is a relationship between economic recession and birth rates, and so, as you all know, the economic, the Great Recession, as it's called now, really started in 2006. So, it's hard to say that Clinton is going to have a continued decline in families moving here, number one, and number two, in, you know, people having children and those children being enrolled in our schools. So, I think, again, I would caution you to think about the decline in enrollment more as being a temporary situation as a result, as a consequence of the recession rather than Clinton's, Clinton of the town is going, going south, and it's not doing well, and families are not going to be moving here. In fact, the opposite is happening. Pretty families are moving into Clinton, and in fact, when the new school is built, you're going to see a flood of new families, and you're going to see enrollments going up. So, that, that's my position on enrollments. So, let's talk a little bit about surplus, because everybody in your family, and I know this is very personal, we all want to live on a budget. We all want to be fiscally responsible. We all want to be fiscally responsible. We want to have a budget, we want to keep to it, but we all have it in our homes, and we always have. I counted to it. I counted this month. I have a flood in my basement a week ago, and I was, and I had, I'm afraid to say, $4,000 of unexpected costs, okay? And that's not even including replacing the carpeting and putting a kind of dry, connecting a dry basement, which is going to be another $4,000. And the reason I'm telling you that is not to tell you my personal business, but to let you know that people need a cushion. Budgets need a cushion, and I'm not saying, and I'm not sure what the implication is if you're suggesting that budgets are being padded, which is certainly completely false. But I do think that you always want to have a bit of a cushion in case something happens that you, that you need. So, that's why I have an issue with this sort of relentless attack on surplus. In fact, surpluses appear to be, to me, sort of good budgeting, in fact. I mean, sort of, you want to have millions of dollars of surplus, because that would be wasteful and silly, but I think that the kind of cushion that we were fortunate to have this year, and we have no guarantee which will happen next year, to me, is not necessarily a bad thing. So, I would also like to, can you continue? I'm not talking too long. The other thing I'd like to talk about was the, the issue of the percentage of budget, budget increase. So, I don't know the exact budget increase now off the top of my head, but 2.78. So, I was at the grocery store the other day, and I wanted to buy some pretzel rods, and so, I grabbed a box of pretzels, packed the pretzel rods, and I grabbed them, they were so much shorter than they used to be. And I swear to God, I'm like, this is like a half a pretzel rod. This is not old pretzel rod. And I see this in Danny and Yover, and I see this in Nutrigen, and I'm like, I'm funny? You know, you pay more and you get less for your food, and in fact, food prices have gone up 19% in 2013, okay? So, yes, there is a 2.78 proposed budget increase, but frankly, considering the overall rates of inflation, including food, I would say that that percentage is respectable. So, I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, I think I'm done. I'm done. Anyway, as you can tell, I'm in, in support of the budget. It's been an honor to be on the Board of Education. Everybody in the board, and I know everybody in this town really cares about kids, and I'm really glad that everybody's here to talk about it tonight.
Hi. My name is Tatsi Kmetkow, and I live on Grove Street. I am in support of the education budget, but I have a couple of questions, and I hope that I'm one of the last people to address the education budget, because I want to do two things at once, which is my want, and that is to address the same issue for both the town and the education budget, namely, costs and budget for electricity and heat. And my desire is to see to what extent the budget reflects an interest in sustainable energy, and because I think we, as responsible citizens, need to look towards other modes and sources of energy than fossil fuels. I'd love us to explore and make sure we have some funding in our budgets so that we can have biofuel, solar energy, wind power, geothermal energy. And so, my, my question is this, is there any allowance in either budget in terms of the utilities for sustainable energy? And if so, I would be thrilled.
Hi. Thank you, Billy Fred, first selectman. There are allocations for sustainable energy. You cannot predict what that may save the town. I would say with our Energy Committee, Paul Bowers here is our chairman, we did put applications in with the G-Rays. We got, we got approved in the superpen this area. You can attest to that.
that you will have over time erosion of the quality of the education. So while yes, it's hard to say, okay, we cut 1% or 4% last year or the year before and see, nothing really changed. It's very, very hard to quantify what changes based on budget over a year or two. But what I'm suggesting is that people should be very careful about having such a, you know, such a concrete example of budgets and high quality education. I'd also like to talk a little bit about this repeated conversation about dropping enrollments. So, and the gentleman who was just up here had said that there has, there is a precipitous drop of enrollments and there continues to be a precipitous, projected precipitous drop in enrollment. And I would really beg to differ. There is a relationship between economic recession and birth rates. And so, as you all know, the economic, the Great Recession, as it's called now, really started in 2006. So it's hard to say that Clinton is going to have a continued decline in families moving here, number one, and number two, in, you know, people having children and those children being enrolled in our schools. So I think, again, I would caution you to think about the decline in enrollment more as being a temporary situation as a result, as a consequence of the recession rather than Clinton's, Clinton of the town is going, going south and it's not doing well and families are not going to be moving here. In fact, the opposite is happening. Pretty families are moving into Clinton. And in fact, when the new school is built, you're going to see a flood of new families and you're going to see enrollments going up. So that, that's my position on enrollments. So let's talk a little bit about surplus. Because everybody in your family, and I know this is very personal, we all want to live on a budget. We all want to be physically responsible. We all want to be physically responsible. We want to have a budget, we want to keep to it, but we all have it in our homes and we always have. I counted it. I counted this month. I have a flood in my basement a week ago. And I was, and I had, I'm afraid to say, $4,000 of unexpected costs, okay? And that's not even including replacing the carpeting and putting a kind of dry, connecting a dry basement, which is going to be another $4,000. And the reason I'm telling you that is not to tell you my personal business, but to let you know that people need a cushion. Budgets need a cushion. And I'm not saying, and I'm not sure what the implication is if you're suggesting that budgets are being padded, which is certainly completely false. But I do think that you always want to have a bit of a cushion in case something happens that you, that you need. So that's why I have an issue with this sort of relentless attack on surplus. In fact, surpluses appear to be, to me, sort of good budgeting, in fact. I mean, sort of, you want to have millions of dollars of surplus because that would be wasteful and silly. But I think that the kind of cushion that, that we were fortunate to have this year, and we have no guarantee which will happen next year, to me, is not necessarily a bad thing. So, I would also like to, can you continue? Am I talking too long? The other thing I'd like to talk about was the, the issue of the percentage of budget increase. So, I don't know the exact budget increase now off the top of my head, but 2.78. So, I was at the grocery store the other day and I wanted to buy some pretzel rods. And so I grabbed a box of pretzels, packed a pretzel rod, and I grabbed them, they were so much shorter than they used to be. And I swear to God, I'm like, this is like a half a pretzel rod. This is not old pretzel rod. And I see this in Danilo, and I see this in Nutrigen, and I'm like, I'm twenty, you pay more and you get less for your food. And in fact, food prices have gone up 19% in 2013, okay? So yes, there is a 2.78 proposed budget increase, but frankly, considering the overall rates of inflation, including food, I would say that that percentage is respectable. So I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, I think I'm done. Anyway, as you can tell, I'm in support of the budget. It's been an honor to be on the Board of Education. Everybody in the board, and I know everybody in this town really cares about kids, and I'm glad that everyone's here to talk about it tonight.
Hi. My name is Tatsi Kmetkow and I live on Grove Street. I am in support of the education budget, but I have a couple of questions and I hope that I'm one of the last people to address the education budget because I want to do two things at once, which is my want. And that is to address the same issue for both the town and the education budget, namely costs and budget for electricity and heat. And my desire is to see to what extent the budget reflects an interest in sustainable energy. And because I think we as responsible citizens need to look towards other modes and sources of energy than fossil fuels, I'd love us to explore and make sure we have some funding in our budgets so that we can have biofuel, solar energy, wind power, geothermal energy. And so my, my question is this, is there any allowance in either budget in terms of the utilities for sustainable energy? And if so, I would be thrilled.
Hi. Thank you, Willie Freds, for his发言. There are allegations for sustainability. You cannot predict what that may save the town. I would say with our Energy Committee, Paul Bowles here is our chairman, we did put applications in with the G-Rates. We got, we got approved in the superintendent's area, he confessed that, for two 100 kW solar systems, one in Elliott and one in Joel. The anticipated cost savings to the town annual basis is $13,000 per school. So that's 26,000. You can't budget for that, okay? You can't budget for that now. Until it's in, you cannot budget for that. You can't not budget for that until you actually start seeking savings, okay? Because what happens is, that's net metering, it goes back into the grid, utility bills are reduced. So once you see the realization of those bills, then the next year you can actually budget for that. We have seen significant saves, and Jack confessed that. We switched, natural gas is running in every building we can, we can do that with. And we've signed a new electric contract about a year and a half, two years ago, which has seen our kilowatt, per kilowatt cost hold down significantly. And I think both of our electric rates have gone down by 30% because of that. And we are budgeting for that. Beyond that, okay? You had one, two, three.
That's right. Some of you won't know that it was in town. Janet Olson worked at a school at Six Martin Drive. I did want to just clarify a couple of statements that were made earlier, just for purposes of keeping facts straight. Enrollment projections have in fact been adjusted so they reflect a decrease or continued decrease and updated based on most recent projections. So I'm not quite sure how the perception was that we've actually increased our enrollment. Second, despite the fact that our enrollments are going down, over the last three years, our cost per student has ultimately dropped from over 58,000 per student to almost 14,000, so a little over $500 a student. And lastly, while I, you know, was okay with the fact that Mr. Cross thought we only had 500 or 438,000 dollars in surplus, we are actually projecting between 538 and 588 at this point. To tag along with Phil's comments about the coaches, the other piece that's really important in that is that when we look at coaches as a professional development tool and an ongoing training for teachers, that there's cost savings for having in-house, in-service programming versus sending 200 teachers out to various gap development programs over the course of the year is more cost effective and tailored made for the kind of work that we're doing. Thank you. There are actually only two coaches. There are three positions. One's a guidance counselor, the other two are coaches.
Good evening. My name is Emily Spagnano at 37 Ben Nell Road. I'm also a new board member. And I just want to make a quick comment because I think it's really important to recognize the budget process and the hard work and effort that goes into it from our Clinton Public School leadership team. Each cost center presents to the Board of Education their proposed budget. And in doing so, there is a summary in that presentation that directly, that summarizes exactly how those costs are connected to the district's goals and objectives. So by the end of the cost centers presentations, as a board member, it was very clear to me that the through line was there and that every dollar spent in Clinton on education is directly connected to student achievement and there's a common set of goals and objectives that we want for our children. It was my first time sitting through all of those presentations and I have to say, in the past, I didn't make much of an effort to go. And you know, all of you are staying here and I know all of you weren't there because I didn't see you there. But it was really clear to me at the end of those presentations, how much thought, time, effort, and consistency is applied by our leadership team when spending our tax dollars. And I was really impressed with that. And I have to hopefully thank our leadership team for putting that time and energy in. Thank you.
Quarterback? I think it's eight people, not seven. Now, it was a bottle. I thought you said your bottle.
Yes, may I?
No, no, sir. Anybody else in the education budget?
Cross examination?
No cross examination, you're out of board.
You're out of board.
Maybe. Maybe I am. Town budget, yes. Who wants to talk about the town budget? Want to talk about the town budget, Kirk?
I'll defer on this first.
Okay. Who'd like to go first?
I'll speak first. As a, as a resident and as a superintendent of schools, thinking about the budget as a whole, ultimately, the town budget is what Willie and all the departments on the town side present as well as the board budget. It is ultimately one budget that supports the services that are provided to all residents in this town. And the one benefit that I, that I want to really address publicly is the work that our Department of Public Works does for us with regard to particularly this last couple seasons of winter, maintaining the fact, maintaining our roads and keeping our, our ability to keep our schools open. We have only five emergency closing days this year where most everyone else has seven, eight, or nine. And that is in large part due to the work that our Public Works Department does. In addition to that, while not a big portion of the line item, certainly our Fire Department provides a huge resource for us as a community and they do wonderful things for us in the public schools as well in terms of fire support days and fire safety, et cetera. And then ultimately, the relationship we have with the Police Department is remarkable. The coordination with the chief and his staff with our work in the schools, the collaboration that takes place at that point is remarkable. Having an SRO in the school system is a real plus for our community, for our students, and ultimately for the overall feeling, the good feeling of safety. Since a year ago, they've implemented a community policing program where every single day in all four of our schools, a police officer on the beat shows up at the school, walks through, checks doors, talks to kids, talks to the administration, making sure that there is a presence in our community. And it's a powerful positive statement that our community has made for the overall safety for all of our kids and for us. So on behalf of the board bed, I want to publicly support all of the efforts that the town has put into their side of the town budget and support all our good effects.
Good evening. My name is John Olson. I live at 101 Pratt Road. At first, I want to thank the Board of Finance for all the good work that we're doing and all the volunteer time that they put in. I also want to say the same for the Board of Education. I moved here 19 years ago with my wife and I've lived in a few towns in Connecticut. And I'd just like to say that there's a quality of life that comes with this community. And you don't get anything unless you invest in it. You know, my children are grown and they're working in New York City here and also in Connecticut. And, you know, I, I'm on a fixed income now because I just retired. But, but I truly believe that if I want to live in this civilized society, if I want to see economic development, if I want to see the kind of town that has the facilities and the things that we've come to enjoy and maybe sometimes we should appreciate them more, then we have to understand there's a cost to that. And I, I know that there's been a lot of struggle to try to find ways to save money, to do things better. But let me say this, in 19 years, when I came here 19 years ago, this town didn't look anything like it looks like today. And I can tell you one, I'm proud of where this town has gone, not just our city, but the people who moved here. And we want to continue to attract people to move here, but it's got to be a partnership between us and the government that we elect. And again, I want to thank, you know, all the volunteers and I know there's so many differences of opinions, but regardless of which side you come down on these things, I think too often people don't appreciate the time that you put in toward the big payday of the one big zero virtual hedge for serving us. We've got their budgets, anyone who wouldn't they get. So again, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak.
Public hearing, Sir Paul, Mr. Cross.
All right. I have another memo for the Board of Finance. I'm, and I, I do appreciate your time and I appreciate the Board of Education's time. I think Mr. Cross has converted his voice, which I will echo actually, that there's a great deal that's got in the town that the Board of Education is something of a free rider. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say that the, that Mr. Cross points about the Board of Education benefiting from the town is well made and I'm going to go into it later in a second. Also, I'm not really surprised that Mr. Olson is in favor of the budget. He, as you may know, I believe is president of the, what was the, the L-CIO, the Public Employees Union. So he's very much in favor of bigger budgets, no matter how big. And my, 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 please correct me. Is that not correct, Mr. Olson? I think it's important, except the source, I think full disclosure is obvious. Anyway, the town of Clinton, this case ended the price itself in terms of mill rates out of the market compared to adjoining and thereby shoreline towns. The fact drives down property values for the discourages economic development that is needed to help shoulder the tax burden and further reflects the mill rate, the vicious cycle. Those who tend to dismiss these facts with equalized mill rates and per capita tax data completely disappoint. No one pays equalized taxes nor do they pay per capita taxes. Mill rates are what determine the tax burden. If Clinton goes forward with the proposed budget, it will extend this very destructive cycle. This is Clinton's line at the top, this could be the new, the new mill rate projected. These are the ones for the towns that are either killing worth or on either side of this. Even though Clinton's town budget represents only one third of Clinton government overall, Clinton government overall spending, it must compete with education, with the education budget that represents the other two thirds of spend. And while two thirds of the money assessed by the, assessed, collected, and administered by the tax assessor, tax collector, and finance director is spent on education, the Board of Education expects the town budget to bear 100% of the finance director's salary instead of the half, as has been the practice in previous years. This is a big step effort for the town, particularly when 1.5 million is spent on expanding the town offices and the old PD to accommodate consolidation of the two finance departments in one location. Some ask why it matters whether costs are attributed to the town or to the education budgets. The tax, tax payers have to pay it either way. So here's why. When the Board of Education does not reflect education spending more than by the town, it is not counted for the state's minimum budget requirement as it should be. That is why the school research officer should be included on the education budget as a police, as a police service. The SRO should be on the education budget and be required to be a, to be dare certified and tasked with implementing the program. The elimination of a program is a direct result of leading the town's budgets and being a free rider on these town services. How much do these services add up to? And I've had to itemize it. They add up to $612,000, of which about $434,000 could reasonably be attributed to the Board of Education. If the Board of Education spares to these costs and shifts them to the education budget, it would reduce the education budget surplus and free the town funds for more adequate public safety. One of the long-term trends that is pushing the town budgets higher with no benefit to taxpayers are Clinton's unfunded pension obligations. For example, the annual required contribution for police pensions is budgeted to increase $75,000 at 8% to $975,000. This represents the 39% of the police payroll in addition for defined retirement benefits. And over 90% of what is contributed is paid out this year in benefits to current retirees. The unfunded pension obligations grow by over $1 million annually. Leas and other pensions should be converted to 401Ks as quickly as possible. There's another cost about which few people are aware. By contract, police employees receive 13 paid holidays issued in lump sum payments twice a year in June and December in addition to their salaries. In addition, officers who actually work on holidays receive a premium. The lump sum sums add up to $96,595 and the premium paid amounts to $25,350. If the feathered portion of this provision was eliminated, there would be adequate funding for required fee on the street and administration, as it is otherwise unnecessary typical choices have to be made. Given all these factors, the Board of Finance will continue to turn, by term of budgets defeated and referendum if you insist on proposing an $853,544 or 5.6% increase in the town budget for 2014-15. Restoring amounts of the Board's selecting trend does not afford government consensus needed to advance this as a credible attempt at a budget that voters should approve. And I have a question of someone who spoke earlier about the, about the cost of living. The cost of living index, according to Bureau of Labor Statistics, increased 1.1% over the last twelve months, regardless of how long your pensions take off. The objective should be to keep any tax levy within the CPI. So how might the budget be adjusted to achieve this objective? The capital improvement budget increased $244,500 or 67% last year. And an additional $298,000 or 39% increase is proposed in the budget this year. Keeping that flat for one year would have the biggest impact on the proposed budget, excepting the police budget proposed by the Board of Selecting would save $52,700. Termining public works can increase from 7.5% to 3.8% when saved $50,000 and might add any to that staff at this time that's just not justified. Keeping the finance director's position a shared position with the Board of Education saves 90% of the increase proposed in the finance budget to $46,439,000. So altogether, these increases would allow you to reproduce the increase in spending to 2.6%, which is only one third of Clinton government spending as across. So if you took that along with the education budget savings, reduction of $689,952 and the town portion, $457,880, you would reduce the proposed. Understand, this is not a reduction in the budget. This is a reduction in the increase in the budget. This is trimming the This is trimming the increase in the budget by $1,147,000. And the tax levy in that case would go up, instead of 4.1%, go up 1.1%, which should be your objective. It is, it is within the powers to propose sensible and acceptable education and town budgets to the taxpayers. Please spare Clinton another round of budget defeats.
Good evening. So, I just want, in interest of full disclosure, Chairman of the Police Commission, totally throw me out. I do want to talk, just touch on a couple of things Mr. Carr raised about the police department. I think he's correct in that we, and it's not limited to the police department, that we have to move towards a 401K-type retirement situation. And this is a big burden on the town. He also mentioned the way to holiday pay, that accrues to the police department or the police officers. Those things have to be negotiated with the police union, and I would be in support of negotiating those things. Unfortunately, our contract was signed recently, these issues were not successfully negotiated, and so they're going to have to come up next time. Another one that he didn't mention that I would mention is some sort of health requirement or health maintenance requirement for police officers. But that's also something that has to be negotiated, but I would be fully in support of that. Now, as far as the town budget goes, you can imagine I'm speaking in favor of the town side of the budget and municipal budget. In the police department, we have currently spent about $288,000 on overtime and will far exceed $300,000 by the end of the year by quite a bit. And there's a reason for that. And the reason is we had a terrible string of long-term injuries over the past year and a half. And when officers are out, we can't simply say, well, Officer Jones is not here today, we'll just do without him. We have minimum staffing requirements for the safety of the public and the safety of the officers. So, when an officer is out, for whatever reason, we have to replace him. And it got to the point where officers were working so much overtime as indicated by the $288,000, that they had to be ordered in. They can't refuse to work. If they're ordered in, they're ordered in, they have to show up and work. But it got to the point where nobody wanted, you just couldn't work anymore. They're fatiguing, just, I use the term killing them, not literally, but it affects their health, affects their personal lives, and it was a terrible situation. Now, it will reserve, resolve itself a little bit as officers come back off injury, but there will always be injuries. This information, of course, was brought to the board, selected by the Board of Finance, and they did agree to help us out. There is one new officer in the budget for next year. At a cost of about $60,000 plus benefits total package, probably in the $85,000 range when you add in all the benefits and the pension and so forth. So, I thank the board of selection, and I thank the Board of Finance for funding that one position. It's one position that will sound like a lot, but it will help us a lot. In addition to that, workload just, you know, keeps going up, going up. Calls for service, we are the first responder for medical calls in town. Ambulance service is having trouble happening during the daytime, and the officers show up, they're going to be darn glad when they show up. So, for those reasons, for that amount of overtime we've spent, we could hire three officers. But if we get one, we're very appreciative, appreciative of that. Again, we thank the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen for seeing the need and doing that. And for that reason, we hope the budget passes. Thank you.
Anybody else in town? Speak about the town budget. That is? All right. We're going to close the meeting and...
Can I ask a question of this person?
No. We're going to close the meeting and we're going to have the special meeting right after this and finalize the budget. Thank you everyone for coming.